Father, we thank you mighty God for many blessings you've given us. Father, I pray Lord that you be with us tonight. Lord, I pray Father that you let your Spirit fill this house. God touch everyone that's here. I pray Father that you let the Spirit of God speak to each individual, Lord. I pray Father that we have a good night and Father our prayer that things get done in an early manner. We love you, we give you honor, praise, in the name of Jesus. Amen. Can you call this meeting order at 6:01 PM? Roll call.
Pinkel, Second, Mayor Hicks.
Present.
Councilman Lucero.
Here.
Padilla.
Here.
Vasquez.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Do you please stand and join me in the presence of Jesus? I pray that the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Who would be present? Mayor, may you motion for a friendly addition? Second. Councilman Reynolds.
Yes.
Manny.
Rick.
Brett.
Yes.
Okay, when we get to number six, guys, we're gonna table it. The county is it ready for it? We're not ready for it. We're gonna go ahead and have a meeting with the county and we'll address this probably in a week. Okay? Citizens to address the council. Let's start with Chairman Armiho, with help from Tony Mace, our sheriff.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, woman, good evening. Here with Commissioner, our county chairman, Commissioner Robert Armiho. We briefly discussed about the current situation with the law enforcement side of the county, specifically the sheriff's office and the financial constraints and where we're at and being able to move forward and provide a effective law enforcement service for our community countywide within the municipalities. And we're here to talk to you a little bit about that and what's going on.
I was just, you all know that the county is in a short run. And I am here today to ask you guys to see if we can help us. But I came to ask for $150,000 to help us carry the sheriff's department over to the next fiscal year. And I really appreciate and so do the sheriff's department and our citizens. We really appreciate that you've considered that.
Will that cover you all the way to the beginning of the next fiscal year?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that will give me, that'll be more than enough to get me toward the to the next fiscal year when we start our budget process and our budget cycle.
Now, for the next fiscal year, we don't see no new revenues or nothing, right? Coming in, right?
There is no projected new revenue coming in. But again, we have a new county manager. We have a new finance director, some other key players in place. We'll start our budget workshop at the end of next month and start fixing some of these problems so we don't have this problem again next year.
Questions? Sidney? Manny?
Okay, I understand you guys are the sheriff's department. What role did you play in our community in Grants, in the city of Grants?
Well, as the sheriff, I have jurisdiction, the whole county, and everything that's incorporated within the county. We work regularly with the police officers in the police department responding to calls, emergency calls, as well as non-priority cars, calls if there's an officer that's not available, as well as backup. State police normally will back up law enforcement officers. They're down to eight from Albuquerque to Gallup. So that responsibility and that role rolls on the, falls on the office of the sheriff. I'm currently four officers down and one security guard now. That limits it what I can and can't do. My primary role and responsibility as the sheriff is to serve subpoenas, provide security to the court and prisoner transport. In the past, we've been doing way more than that. And until I fill those positions, unfortunately, it's gonna limit the hours of operation that I'm out, that I'll be able to accommodate that with the staff that I have.
Anything else? Rick?
The $150,000 a year, what does that actually cover? What does that pay for?
The $150,000 will be used to basically keep the sheriff's office running. We're down to 9% of my budget right now. That includes salary, overtime, replenishing the vacant positions, equipment, uniforms, just everything that encompasses our day-to-day operations.
You said you had how many officers beside yourself?
I'm down four officers and one court secretary.
Brett?
Is that a loan or is that a...?
It would be a donation to the county sheriff's department. It won't be a loan, no. They don't have no money to pay us back. Okay?
I got another question.
You go right ahead, you're on the phone, baby.
I don't know, I understand there's a bit of you. Somebody is driving from Albuquerque every day.
Correct.
How come it doesn't leave you that costs the county money?
Currently, that is my undersheriff that commutes from Albuquerque every day. He has a family and a home there that's established there. And unfortunately, the salary of the undersheriff doesn't permit him to be able to establish here. He was renting a place here, but, I mean, if you're gonna work here, if you're gonna spend everything you're making to live here, you know, it's kinda, you're really not getting anywhere, you're not gaining anything. And there is nothing in our policy or procedures or anything that limits that or stops that. That's at the sole discretion of the sheriff. For the services and what we're getting, we're getting bang for the buck. You're not gonna get the expertise, the knowledge, or the support from anywhere else.
Anything else? Of course, we can't make this decision tonight, okay, because it's not on the agenda. But I will have Laura do is look into get Kimberly to look and see if we can swing this or not in this fiscal year. And I'd like to have them meeting on Friday at noon. And we'll discuss it then and see if we can't help them out. On my honest opinion, I think we should. We finally got the druggies on the run. We're pressing them hard, we're pressing them out of our county. And if we lose the sheriff's department, we're gonna lose that battle. If the sheriff can't do his job, it's gonna put a really, really, really big burden on those people we got standing in the back of that room right over there. Because then we're gonna have to cover the sheriff's responsibilities, guys. So, let's plan on being here Friday at noon with a special meeting. The papers will print that for us tonight. That'll serve as our notice that we're having a special meeting on Friday at noon. And we'll come back and we'll discuss it then and see if we can afford to give them $150,000.
Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, for coming. We can't fix it if we don't, and it's broke. Harry, would you like to speak? Representative Harry Garcia, for all you out there that don't know him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. You know, I just wanna say thank you for even considering helping the county out. They are in bad shape and somebody, you know, if you don't hang together, it's not gonna happen. So we really need to come together and try and help each other out. At the end of the day, it'll all come back to us. You know, as far as a representative, I'm trying to get them capital out of the money from Santa Fe, which I did, I also helped the city with capital out of the money this year.
And the solidway story.
And the follow-away deal in Gallup. And, you know, but we really, really need to work together. Because if we don't, like I said, at the end of the day, somebody's gonna say, man, we should've done that when we had the chance. And I appreciate even the consideration to help the sheriff's department out. And you're not only helping the sheriff's department, you're helping the whole community. Thank you, Sheriff, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Harry. John Martinez, veterans.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, Mr. Mayor and Madam Manager. My name is John Martinez and I'm here to bring you a little bit of good news. There is a gentleman in Albuquerque by the name of Greg Downey. He is a general manager of Camping World that is between here and Albuquerque. You've noticed it because you've noticed that big flag that flies. It's 40 by 80 flag. Bob and I stopped there a couple of weeks ago and we asked him, what do you do with your old flags? And they said, we send them back to the manufacturer and they get repaired or they get destroyed. Well, the one that was flying on that flagpole that day now belongs to us. We asked him for it and he would give it to us on one condition, that we give it to the veterans of Sebola County as a tribute and as an homage for all their sacrifice, their daily sacrifice, and those that have given everything for our country. So that 40 by 80 flag is now at Rocky's, it belongs to us. And I think it's something that is very exciting. We're very proud of the fact that we got it and it didn't cost us anything. And my friend Richard here has got the second part of this good news to share with you all.
For the record, that's Richard Jones. Go ahead, Richard, step up there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we'd like to do tonight is talk about the veterans a little. John and I, both are veterans, there's lots of veterans in here. I think in Sebola County, there's about 2,800, 2,900 veterans in this county. And we always like to do things for them. And I'd like to ask the council to consider helping us out by getting a flagpole to fly this flag. Maybe put it over here in the park. Like, it's a 40 by 80, if anybody's been over there seen it. It takes 130-foot tall flagpole to fly it. I've got some quotes and stuff on it. And it will be for the whole county, for the city, you know, the city mainly, because like our sign out here, it'll be a draw off the highway, off the interstate. And fly it on special occasions, especially like Memorial Day, Veterans Day, 4th of July. You know, any day that the city wants to fly it. I mean, that's what we're asking for. I'm just gonna estimate from what I've got back so far, we're probably gonna have to come up with about $15,000 to $22,000. And as a member of the VFW, the American Legion, we've all agreed to, you know, as a fundraiser, John's a member also, we'll keep the flag at the veterans' post and, you know...
Where did you see, where did you guys envision this flagpole going in at, guys?
I'm, I was kinda thinking of...
Right there where we fly the American flag now, just put a bigger pole in the middle there?
Right there.
Not only will it be, well, it enhanced the appearance of our community, but a flag that big, I know that when we have family coming from out of town, whatever, we always drive by that flag, we always stop, we take pictures. It's gonna be a draw for people off of the interstate, because it will be seen by the interstate.
So, Mr. Jones, are you staying here at Fire and Ice?
Yes, ma'am, there will be at the Field of Honor.
Right there where we have the American flag flying now, when we move that pole to 130-foot pole, we'll fly a regular full flag on that 130-foot pole. And then on special occasions, we'll fly that 40 by 80 flag.
And when this flag is, you know, in time, you know, with the high winds that we get and the intense radiation off the sun, it's going to fade and it's going to, it's going to deteriorate in time. Well, in between now and that time, maybe we can come up with about $3,000 and we can buy our own flag that we can fly every day. But for now, since this is a donation, we envision it, you know, up on the flagpole, like I said, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and 4th of July. So, I think personally, I'm very excited about this. It's, like Richard says, you know, both of us are veterans and...
You got two of us sitting up here too, buddy.
If you stop to think about it, it's something that goes down deep into the bottom of of your heart, to see something like that, to be a part of something like that, to share it with the rest of the community and the rest of the world. I mean, what a fight. And the city of Grants will be taking two steps forward for you to do that.
Questions? Sidney?
No.
Manny? Rick?
I like the idea of seeing the city of Gallup as a political poll of the flag.
Thank you, sir.
And it's through the veterans. I think it's a great tribute and I'm for it.
Well, I forgot, Fred, you're a veteran too, there's three of us up here now. Forgot all about that there Vietnam buddy.
Oh, excuse me, just going back a little bit of that. Are you guys in charge of replacing one-up flags throughout the city?
No, we do that, Brett.
Because I was looking around at the golf course.
We need to replace the one at the golf course.
That would be a good idea, guys, from our way to...
Thank you, sir.
Well, we appreciate your cooperation, appreciate y'all listening to us. I appreciate you guys coming down here. Thank you very much. Moses and Joe Garduni. Galindo, sorry. Sorry about that, Sarge. I need new glasses. Come on, all you cops, come on up here.
This is half the crew, that's the other half. Mayor, council, those in attendance who don't know me. My name is Moses, I'm lieutenant with your Grants Police Department. I've served this community for 15 years and plan on giving you at least five more. My reason for being here is simple, my guys need a raise. With all due respect, before you approve outside agencies, city money, please consider the following. We have heard all the buzz about all city employees getting a nice raise. We've been paid a visit by the mayor who assured us a raise was coming. We distinctly remember comments such as, sorry, next year. And hold the line, guys, your raise is coming, when last year's increase was denied. We appreciate your efforts then and value all that you are doing to approve pay raises now. However, your police department needs to be evaluated separately and compensated for the quality service that you ask of us. Last year, a 5% increase was proposed. That's about $1 for every employee per hour. If this is your plan for this year's increase, you will only be giving my officers a raise to still be underpaid for their services. As of late, the current trend in New Mexico law enforcement is 8 to an 8.5 increase. This means New Mexico State Police, APD, Bernario County, a lot of our neighboring surrounding agencies, including our local corrections facilities, will be luring our well-trained officers by simply offering more money. As a side note, my officers are well aware that the grass is not greener on the other side. As everybody standing before you knows that one of our officers transferred to New Mexico State Police. And guess what, guys? He came back to Grants, back to Grants PD, because this was home, period. I stand before you as a commanding officer who wants to take care of my troops. I want to recruit more and importantly, retain qualified officers. The only way to do that is to pay these guys more. We ask that each of you assess our department separate and consider an 8.5 raise when you approve the next budget. I do have some figures here for you. Their current wages, and on the bottom I wrote what, 8.5 increase? Mind you, all of the wages that are here will more likely go up. And if they do without any sort of raise on our end that is competitive, I'm gonna lose guys. We can't afford to lose our guys. I'll turn it over to my sergeant, thank you for your time.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you here tonight. For those of you that don't know me, I am Joe Galindo, sergeant with the Grants Police Department. Here with my fellow officers who are here to my side, just like Lieutenant Marcus said, and also our families, who are seated all throughout the council hall. Mayor Hicks, last year, we were here inquiring about our raises. He told us, give us a year, to give you a year, and to hold the line. Well, we have done so, sir. Looks like to our mayor once again, and we're here to address this. Look at the council, see a new face, Mr. Padilla. Congratulations, you're welcome, sir. I'm gonna start with what I remember from last year. Ms. Reynolds. You were up there last year, but you did not oppose our raises and you were empathetic. We thank you for that. But we were kinda bummed out. That next day, at the station, we received flowers and chocolates from you with a note that said something to the effect of, next year. Mr. Vasquez, you weren't present last year. I've heard you say that you support police and agree that we need a pay increase. During the budget approval, it would be the best time for you to show support and to talk about it. Mr. Lucero, you had just filled in for the late Councilman Dickens. I'm sure you remember what all was said, but you had no basis to approve a raise at that point. You were fairly new. Hopefully, now you have a better understanding of the importance of public safety and will consider that. I do remember former Councilman Michael Lewis was up there, asked why we were not present during March's meetings for the budget planning. When budget planning took place, we advised Mr. Lewis that our chief was our voice and he requested an increase during the budget proposal last year, the 5%. Our chief remains our voice, but sometimes in law enforcement you need backup, which is why we are here. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we stand here before you with our families after holding the line for one year. In that year, we have lost five good officers, two of which left law enforcement altogether, completely, for higher-paying jobs. Three left for other opportunities with other agencies. Like Lieutenant Marcus said, we did get one back from that, because the grass was not greener on that. It's cost the city 15 to 25 years of quality experience with those losses, because they could not afford to stay here. Thankfully, one of these officers returned. Okay, I'm kinda going off target on this, I'm not good at speeches, but they're real. Our department currently consists of 16 officers, three of which are currently at the New Mexico Law Enforcement Academy in Santa Fe. It causes pressure on us and they are simply not here to help cover the streets while they're learning how to do this job and get that certification. We are currently short three officers and we'd like to fill those positions with qualified, quality officers. The only way to achieve this is to pay Grants officers better. Of the 16 officers we currently have on our department, 11 live in the city of Grants. Eight of us are homeowners, including myself. The remaining five live on the outskirts of the city in Sebola County. 15 out of the 16 officers, believe it or not, are Grants High School alumni. We are products of this city, we are vested in this city, and we want to continue to serve the community we grew up in. Please make it easier for us to stay home and consider the 8.5% increase Lieutenant Marcus and Chief Beal will be proposing. Thank you for your time.
Questions? Sidney?
I have a question on this. Does, were the uncertified, does that mean you don't want to hire them anymore? Where you have NA for a salary?
We're gonna leave that alone. I think that's fair. They have up to a year to go to the academy, get certified. And what better reward than almost $3 raise when they return? So that is motivation in itself for them to do everything they have to act right, remain square away, not only while they're there, but when they come home.
Anything else?
And that's not uncommon anywhere you go. The uncertified starting pay is...
A lot lower.
A lot lower.
Well, I just wanna say one thing. I believe that the people that work for the city of Grants are underpaid. But I can't, for me, I think all of the city of Grants needs a raise. I feel, I would feel, I would not feel good about myself to get, to give raises to one department and not to another.
That's not gonna happen, Sidney. We're gonna give raises to every employee out there this year. That's our priority here, that's what we promised last year, and that's what's gonna happen.
And we're well aware of that. All we ask is just a separate evaluation.
You guys are asked to be evaluated as police officers, as cops. And I understand that, I gotcha. I understand that 100%, guys. Anything else?
No.
Manny?
Yes, I got something. What do you, what is your process now, after sending your police officers to the academy to retain them there for a certain amount of years, since we're spending that kind of money and training?
You know, we had to generate a contract that required they stay with us for two years.
Okay.
That was the only thing we could do to keep them. When we didn't have that contract, they would literally go to the academy, waste $8,000 to $10,000 of our budget to train them, and then leave the minute they get that certification. That's a golden ticket. We can go anywhere with that certification. We might jump into a few hoops and we're there, but this is home.
That's what I wanna see, I wanna make sure we retain and we recover our $10,000 and not lose it.
But we have the contract and what better way than to pay these guys what they deserve?
I'm headed here.
Yeah, I think we all value what you guys do up there. And it's shown with what's happened in the last two years. So, I assure you that, you know, your proposal will be considered. And I personally appreciate letting you know that we value what you do up there.
Thank you. Brett?
Chief?
Sir?
Well, you're at full staff, how many officers are there? Besides your sergeant?
No, what, including myself, we're at full staff with 18 police officers.
And now, you said 16?
We only have 16 right now, we have two open slots.
Okay. It's confusing, I think, Sidney.
That's including a service aide.
That's including a service aide position, which we also are short at this time. We do currently have one service aide for the city of Grants at this time.
And the service aide doesn't sound like much, but a few years ago, we had a real bad problem with vagrants here in the park. And I accredit our service aide, he's now left for a different, better-paying job. I accredit him cleaning that park up.
Are you kidding, including for the other person?
Yes, sir. We actually have a person that has cleared the background phase and we're anticipating to perhaps interview him this week or early as next week. And that would leave us with one police officer position to fill. We do have one public service aide to fill and we anticipate doing that here shortly as well. That's very valuable too, because sometimes those individuals end up becoming police officers if other officers move on.
And I'd like to make a note here now, there'll be an article coming out in the Beacon about... Citizen, sorry. About Grants coming from like 28 of the same city list, we're now down to 13. I'd love to break the talks in, okay?
We can do it, we'll do it.
And I'm standing here and I'm looking at you guys and that's why. That's why, okay? I told you guys, hang on, baby, we're working on it. Thank you. Okay? Thank you, guys, for coming here.
I got something for Mr. White.
Yes, sir.
Get that engine in.
That got nothing to do with this. We'll see ya. Thank you very much, guys.
Richard, come back.
Okay, let me have Kerry Tally, Cassie Gandler, Carrie Tally, and Cameron. Come on up.
Good evening. Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Hicks. My name is Kerry Tally. I'm a resident, a taxpayer, and a voter in the city of Grants. I'm also a business owner, U.S. Air Force disabled veteran, and an animal lover. As a service to the community, I run a page on Facebook called Community Awareness Page. People post things like missing pets, community events, along with things like power and water outages, school closures, things like that. There are a little more than 4,000 people in this group. I run the page along with two other people that actually helped me approve every post before it can be seen by the public. I'd like this opportunity to actually give you a handout so that I could read my actual personal post from about two weeks ago.
It's all right, Jake. I don't know, something, he's in the ground about something.
This is posted Saturday, March 17th, was regarding the Animal Care Center. I'll begin. Over the last several weeks, I have received several private messages, pending posts and phone calls regarding people wanting to voice their concerns about problems with the Animal Care Center in Grants. Yesterday, I received two messages in particular that disturbed me in a way that I cannot describe. I decided to look into it further by meeting in person with a few people that used to be employed by the... I decided to look into it further by meeting in person with a few people that used to be employed by the Animal Care Center. Please know in advance, these were not disgruntled employees, but concerned citizens. I will not provide the names of these people. Keep in mind, this was my Facebook post two weeks ago. I will not provide the names of these people, but I want to share with you some of what I learned and what is said to the Academy of the ACC. I understand in advance this is going to stir up some problems for some. It is not my concern. My concern is for the well-being of those animals. And that is the intent behind this post and is also the intent of all the people that decided to come forward. Also know that I am only, I am reporting only the information given to me. I will keep my personal feelings and opinions about it to myself until this has been investigated. I listened to these folks and their complaints, their concerns, their grievances, and then I asked several questions. Here are some of what was shared. One question I asked was, "If I could be a voice for you, what would you like for me to relay to our community?" Their answer was that any animal that walks through the front door of the Animal Care Center is signed up for a death sentence. As you can imagine, this caught me a little off guard. I asked them to explain and they gave several reasons. Number one, all dogs are held in the same area. Sick dogs, aggressive dogs, healthy dogs, et cetera. Dogs that are healthy and could potentially be adopted out oftentimes end up sick and generally die within days. Number two, dog breed discrimination. Most pit bulls, rottweilers, healers, labs, and, and finger quotes, res dogs are not even given a chance to be adopted. They are euthanized immediately. Smaller breeds like terriers, chihuahuas, et cetera, they're held for longer, they're held longer for adoptions. Number three, even transports are not happening as much because several agencies will not take animals from our care center because we have become known for sending out dogs that have disease like parvo, kennel cough, et cetera. Number four, medications are always running out, so sick dogs that could normally be treated just end up getting euthanized. Another question I asked was regarding the care of the animals and humane euthanasia. Here are some of the answers I received. This made me cry. Our ACC is euthanizing about thirty to four dogs, thirty to forty dogs a week and about ten cats. Number two, most of the time they are not euthanized in a humane way. It was explained to me that when an animal is euthanized, it's required by law that they give a sedative first and then two more shots into a vein. The sedative relaxes the animal while one technician is holding them and trying to make them comfortable. The other technician then administers the other two shots, which then causes the death of the animal in about eight breaths without any stress or pain. It was further explained to me that our ACC runs out of this sedative on a regular basis, so they bypass that step, jam the shot into their backside or their liver, which is supposed to be very painful and it takes up to thirty minutes to die. One tech described it as peanut butter being shoved through a needle into your muscle. They also explained that they are very concerned, excuse me, that licensed technicians are not administering these shots as state law requires, but employees working under a supervisor. The ACC runs out of cleaning, I'm sorry, number three. The ACC runs out of cleaning products on a regular basis and cannot afford to replace them. The technicians worry that what they're using instead is not enough to actually kill the sickness and germs that is spreading so rampant. Number four, the dog food given to the dogs and cats is of poor quality and should be changed immediately. Page two. Here are some other things that they wanted to relate to the community. It was communicated, I'm sorry, number one. It was communicated to the public that the scheduled Safe Hobbies Day adopted on was canceled due to staffing problems. This is a lie according to former employees. The event was canceled because the entire center is in quarantine for distemper, parvo, and kennel cough. Number two, they believe that money is being misspent. Having the director's card repainted and all of the ACC vehicle, vehicles decals replaced instead of buying medicine for the dogs and necessary cleaning supplies as like brushes, hardware, et cetera, they believe that is wrong. Number three, anyone who works for the ACC is not ever to talk about what happens at the ACC. When an employee voices a concern, there is always repercussions layered, so no one says anything even if they feel as something is morally wrong. Number four, ninety-nine percent of the time when the ACC says that dogs have been transported, it is a lie. They are actually in the freezer, but we are not allowed to tell anyone that, in quotes. This was my response when I asked about donations. Number one, all dog food that is donated is given away to friends, family, or employees. It is not fed to the dogs. Number two, most of the beds, blankets, et cetera, they're donated. They are also given away to friends, family, or employees. It never goes to the dogs. The last thing that was said was this, in quotes, "The Animal Care Center needs the community to step in. We have to save the animals." And remember, this is my post continuing on. This is where I come in. I know that God has blessed me with a voice. I also have a platform to use that voice. If I know something is wrong and I do nothing, then I might as well be doing it too. I believe that it is our job as a community to stand up for the voiceless and do the right thing. The animals cannot speak for themselves. It's time that we do that for them. I have not actually spoken to anyone at the ACC or from the City of Grants regarding these allegations. I will update as soon as I do so, and that was the end of my post.
Why haven't you spoken to, to her? Why haven't you spoken to me?
I'm actually gonna answer that right now.
You haven't spoken to anybody, but you're here in front of the council.
I am.
How are we supposed to solve it when she hasn't had an opportunity to solve it?
Well, my first instinct was to reach out to Sherri Baysden or to Laura Harmio.
But you didn't.
But. One of the com, common things that I heard from everyone I actually interviewed was that they had already taken their concerns to Sherri, to Laura, and even one person to Mayor Hicks.
That's a lie. And I'll tell you that right now, and whoever told you that needs to bring their butt here.
They're here.
Where is he? Stand up here and show me who spoke to me and told me that this crap was going on at the, at the center. Come on, if you're near, step up.
Mr. Mayor, I'm right here.
Okay, you never have spoken to me about any of this crap going on at the center.
So we had a training Thanksgiving when I was still an employee.
Yes, you did. And I was there and we talked about raises.
I said nothing about raises. What I came to you for was that it was only me and the other officer at the time to do six hours of cleaning.
Yes, ma'am. And we talked to you about getting help. We did not speak anything about any dogs being euthanized or anything else that day.
Not euthanized, no, but since I asked if we could get some help since we were so
And what did I tell you? That we would look at help. We would look at getting you some help. Didn't I tell you that?
Yes, sir.
But there was nothing. None of this crap that is in this stuff right here was ever said to me. And you know that as well as I know that.
None of you have spoken to me or Les Gaines, who is directly over the Animal Care Center.
And I'm sorry, that upsets me, man. I got three dogs and a cat, okay? I just had to put a dog down that was seventeen years old. I love my dogs. I take care of my dogs. They're all microchipped. So if they come up missing, I know where to get them.
That's good. I wish everybody in this community was more
Well, not everybody does. Not everybody loves animals the way that some of us do. But this right here, this right here upsets me to be held, okay? Because you guys are backdooring something and saying that you've spoken to people when you haven't. Me and you discussed about getting you help at the animal shelter. That was it. We did not discuss anything that is in here. And then she's posting it out there on, on Facebook that I have been told and I have been advised of this, and that is total crap.
That was actually not a part of my post. Nothing about you, ma'am, was in that post.
Go ahead.
We were told after the Thanksgiving, after we, well, she spoke
Who told you?
Our supervisor.
Okay.
Our supervisor was said that we were not to jump rank anymore, that it was to go to her and it would be taken up. We would be disciplined if it went any higher. And we, so we did go to her. We did, Les did come around quite a bit. He has done wonderful things with the care center. But as far as everything else, we got, I told him, I'll take it to Laura. I'll take it to Laura.
That one concern was to get help, right?
Not only help, we voiced many concerns to our supervisor.
The only concern I ever heard through any grapevine was that we need more help and it was probably because of Thomas posting stuff on Facebook. And what did I do? I authorized another staff member. The only times we had been short at the care center was when we were unable to hire individuals. Not because we cut funding, not because we didn't authorize positions. It was just trying to find somebody who wanted to work there.
These were issues that me brought, the, the not having our cleaning supplies. Whether anyone says we did or didn't, we weren't there. We did not have those available to us for whatever reason.
I'm gonna tell you then
And we brought those concerns. It wasn't
I have spoken to Edwina and I don't even know Edwina's last name, but Edwina is the county CEO. Tony may, may know her last name. I have spoken to her on several occasions and when Kerry posted this, she got on right away and she said, "None of this is true. You are speaking to disgruntled employees." None of this came up until Ms. Townley no longer worked there. Cassandra and Ms. Townley worked there.
That is That is true. If I could continue, if I could continue forward, I could explain a little bit more of this if that's okay.
And Edwina, I, she will verify that none of this is true and she helps out there. She's been helping there for six years.
So council, may I continue?
Go ahead.
Okay. I decided that at this point to reach out to my community instead. I knew the community would care. My post got the attention of thousands of people in our community. Some came forward with their own personal horror stories, very similar to these. Some were in support of a very serious investigation and some were furious with me because they viewed this post as a direct attack on Sherri Baysden. I'd like to state for the record that my post was not directly intended for any one person, but to all those who were fully aware of the severity of this situation but still chose to do nothing. I left this post up for about four days and then I took it down. The intent behind why I posted it had already served its purpose. I was wrong about one thing in my post. It is not state law that a sedative must be given before an animal is euthanized, but it is considered the more humane thing to do. And after some, doing some research, it only cost an additional average of about eighty cents per animal to use the sedative. Moving on, I'll conclude with this. Someone said it to me yesterday, "How you treat your animals in your community shows the character of your community." Right now, the Animal Care Center seems to be the bottom of the priority list. I am here tonight to try and work on changing that. It seems as if the ACC here in Grants is not meeting or is barely meeting the requirements and standards that it needs to be in order to be functioning correctly. Why can't we raise our standard to be better in this community? Instead of reaching out to see what other animal shelters are doing, can't we make the effort to raise the bar and become the exceptional facilities that other shelters and care centers see as the example? We can spend a little extra money on food. We can spend a little extra money on sedatives so that animals don't have to die a horrible death. We can spend a little extra time and money ensuring that we have the right amount of vaccinations and medications available at all times. We can spend a little more time and money making sure that we have the proper cleaning supplies so that the animals do not have to live in guilt. We also can put forth the effort to educate our community as to what happens when you do not spay or neuter or vaccinate your pets. And the last thing is, we can take the time to inform the community as to when the ACC needs help, whether it needs volunteers, money for transports, fundraisers, or help in finding the right fosters for these animals. We as a community want this to be a priority. We want to raise the standard. I brought, well, I brought two. There's an additional, I guess. People with me that were speaking to you, they'll speak to you tonight about what they actually witnessed firsthand as ACOs at the ACC and they will be providing documentation that can attest to all of the information that was stated in my post.
Once again, guys, once again, why haven't you came and speak to Laura? We were told that they We were told, but you guys don't work there no more, right?
And we were directed
Okay, but you don't work there no more, right?
Exactly, which is why
My house all brought up once
We can't work from the inside, unfortunately.
No, that's my point. You don't work there no more, so you should have came to Laura, right?
Before I start, I have a few packets that I'd like to hand out if that's okay.
Bring them up. Your guys' time's up. You got a question? Or there?
I want you to finish first.
Well, their three minutes is up, but that's okay. Actually, they've been up there for almost twenty. I mean, it's, it's pretty upsetting to me when there's stuff out there, that things were said, but were never ever said, okay? Because that makes it lies. Period. Okay? That makes it false and that's what we've got here.
I would argue, sir, that things were said, unfortunately, that, that working from the inside
Things were said that were not true. Things said about me that were not true.
We have said nothing about you, sir.
Ms. Townley, you, you are the one that told me when you were messaging me on Sunday, we have spoken to you, Les, and the mayor. I'm like, you have not spoken to me, so I asked these two
They spoke to you and I was
They spoke to me about an employee. They never spoke to me about anything that's in your post anywhere, okay? And there's nothing in here about any of that. That upsets me, guys. Go ahead, finish what you've got. We gotta move on.
Alright, so I'm gonna jump my wall beginning of here, but in the packets that you have, there should be two statutes. One, NMSA sixty-one dash fourteen dash twenty-nine. And I'm gonna read it word for word. It is a violation of that act for a person to perform euthanasia for euthanasia agency or animal shelter in this state without possessing a valid license pursuant to the Animal Sheltering Act. Note, under advisement of my supervisor, it was stated, as long as a person holding a valid license was in the building, an unlicensed person can euthanize. Without said person being immediately present, I was directed to euthanize. On many cases. Furthermore, NMAC sixteen point twenty-four point three point two, euthanasia by injection of FDA-approved sodium pentobarbital euthanasia solution or approved euthanasia solutions. The approved routes of injection of FDA-approved sodium pentobarbital euthanasia solution is intravenous, so right in the vein, intra-peritoneal, which is the empty space in the abdominal cavity. And then, intrahardiac injection only when the animal is humanely rendered unconscious. Nowhere does it state it's an approved method to butt shoot. Butt shoot is an intramuscular shot of the euthanasia solution straight into the hind head. I have watched many times this happen. It takes thirty to forty-five minutes for the animal to finally let go and die. Watching them as they flail around and kick and scream, all you can do is hold that animal until it lets go. Watching this for approximately four months, multiple times a week, I finally went to training in Santa Fe and learned the correct approved methods. The instructor there stated that it was illegal to do so. I notified my supervisor of that and I refused to euthanize in that matter from that point forward. The reasoning behind butt shooting is to keep personnel safe while putting down an aggressive dog. I'm confused by it as there are premix sedatives that can be, that can render an animal unconscious and unable to feel pain. ACE should be mixed with another called Telazol, a non-narcotic, non-narbiturate injectable anesthetic. And sure, they do have ace promazine, which is a mild tranquilizer. The most commonly used in, in most shelters is a premix of ketamine and xylazine. Due to its immobilizing agents, the ABMA states, "The number one thing to remember when euthanizing an animal is the ability to induce the loss of consciousness and death with minimum pain, distress, or anxiety." That does not always occur when insured. No animal, no matter how vicious, should have to endure that kind of sickness before they die. I understand that money is a huge issue when it comes to ACC, but this should be a common sense cost. I have supplied a chart within the packet of expenses of these sedatives. The ones highlighted, there were many times that when the Laguna animal control truck would show up, all the animals that they had would be immediately put down. Not all were sick, not all were mean, and sadly, not all were dead before being back. One Laguna ACO I overheard say that he didn't have time to wait, so he left. Once I took over euthanizing, I made sure every animal went down in the quickest and most painless way possible. On the low side, fifty to sixty animals. On the high side that I euthanized and assisted in euthanizing in one month was a hundred and eighty. Secondly, commanding your subordinate to sign outside of their jurisdiction is not only wrong, but is a liability for the officer and the center itself. After more thought on this, I did some research and invalidated my suspicion. It is a violation and I could have been terminated on those grounds. I also was instructed to blatantly lie to our community. It's wrong. It's immoral. And people cannot know how to help if they're kept in the dark. Once again, common sense. Part of the job duty is to be impartial and not show preferential treatment toward anyone in the community, including family and friends. That was not always the case in few experiences. For example, I understand not citing an elderly woman because she has dementia, but if you can't take care of that dog, that dog's better off with another friend. Another would be during my employment, I was dispatched to a business on First and Roosevelt regarding dogs fighting. Upon my arrival, I saw six dogs in a fenced-in area. I left a notice, or what they call a green tag. So he could contact us, I asked, the following morning, my supervisor advised me that he called and complained. I asked her what to do since I was a newbie and he's clearly in violation. She gave me the story behind this man and said to leave it be. She doesn't want to open up that can of worms. Thirdly, it's common practice and highly recommended for animal shelters to vaccinate upon intake and revaccinate every two to four weeks, depending on the risk of infectious diseases. In our shelter's case, we are at high risk. I was told to only vaccinate the adults once for the duration of their stay as it was a waste. They're gonna be put down anyway. I thought I was wrong, now I did as I was instructed. Many adults and puppies as well contracted kennel cough where they couldn't breathe and they had bloody noses. where they couldn't breathe and they had bloody noses. And in few instances, we found animals dead in their kennels the following morning due to those sicknesses. With my last month working at the care center, all but one animal was sick. He's been there for about ten--
How long ago did you leave the care center?
My last day there was February 21st.
And yet, we're here in April, and you still haven't come to me, or to her, or to anyone here, since you've come into a public forum to shame the city and the ACC.
We're not trying to shame them.
That's what-- Whether you're trying to or not, because you're not doing anything to fix this when you didn't come and address the people that can't fix it. The council, what we're gonna do here tonight is we're gonna direct Laura to go over there and fix this. We're gonna direct Les to go over there and fix this. And this is where this should have came. It shouldn't have came here to this council, guys.
I agree, sir.
So why didn't you come to Laura?
We tried.
You never tried, Thomas, ever. Speak to me except for after Carrie had sent her post, then you messaged me. So, for the public, I want you to know that we do care about the Animal Care Center.
More than you know.
We care about the animals, we care about our staff, and we are gonna hold them accountable just as we hold all of our departments accountable. Les and I and the rest of our administration will continue to monitor and check out things. Carrie, you posted that you guys have reported us to some higher state level. We welcome any group coming in to look at what we're doing. We have nothing to hide. So at this point, that would be wonderful if somebody outside came in to look at if these individuals are telling the truth. And for the council, I invite you to look at Ms. Cassandra Jane's Facebook page to see what kind of individual she is. Same for our others. I think as administration, we can share a video of Ms. Townley and her behavior at the center and why she's no longer there. So you're welcome to go over there, and Les and Sherri can share those with you so that you can see how reputable these individuals are.
May I add--
Is there anything against me?
Oh, nothing, nothing at all.
May I address that now?
Guys, this is over. This is done tonight, okay? We were gonna address this, we're gonna take care of it. We let you guys run over almost thirty minutes on your three minutes, okay? Thank you, guys, for bringing it to us. I wish you would have brought it through the proper channels though. Okay. Oh, now this is the good part here. Discussion on the charter and action. Last week, we sent everybody else to find out what they could find out, and I'm here to see what's up. Go ahead, Cindy, which you find?
I come from, I contacted the municipal lead, Mr. Roger Macon, on the 29th of March, I waited to the last minute. Reiterating again that term limits are not constitutional. He further told me numerous other people from the municipality contacted him, and he told him the same thing. So--
Manny?
Same thing. Amen.
Okay, but here's my question to you guys. Did you ask about if we have to take the charter back to the people or can we amend it here?
It doesn't need to be amended.
Because it's got the foot, though.
Because it has--
Well, we need to take that out.
Yeah, so if we take it upon ourselves to grab all of our terms and take it somewhere else, it's not gonna be support, so it's a waste of our money. We can relive it, we change it, it doesn't matter.
Fred? Well, I'm not gonna ignore you, guys, because that means I'm gonna sit up here every two weeks and say, "We're not in compliance with our charter." We're not gonna do that. No, because our charter still says that we have a term limit. So we need to take it out. It doesn't matter. Then we need to take it out.
So to amend the charter, we have to-- We have to either by a proposal submitted by the governing body to the elected citizens, by the elected citizens have to vote for the amendment, or by a petition put forth by five percent, signed by five percent. So you, as a body, cannot amend it, it has to go to the citizens.
Yes, and you have the foot, though. I don't think it's gonna be--
Well, then, let's get a petition with five percent of it on there. Let's take this out of the charter. I mean, let's just take it out of the charter. And that way, next time, whoever wants to run again for a third term, we don't have this crap going on. But it won't be me. I'll tell you that right now. Okay?
All right, then we move on.
Get a petition with five percent of the elected voter.
And the petition's supposed to come from the public, from you.
So, all you out there in the public, give me a petition with five percent of the vote. Go easy on it. No, that's not quite five percent. There should be, I don't know, I think we got eight thousand people registered, so we need one hundred and fifty, somewhere around there. So Elise, maybe you can handle that? Thank you very much. As soon as you get that for us, we'll put it back on here to take action on the charter. But as of right now, we are not in compliance with the charter. We'll move forward.
I tried telling you.
But you also know that you weren't gonna run, Jay, though. And that's what I was going on, okay?
I didn't ever say that.
Yes, you did, right here in that chamber at that microphone.
You weren't even here for that meeting.
Yes, I was.
So, no, you were not.
Okay, next thing we have, approval of the limits for the 390. I'll entertain a motion. Are there any corrections? Have you seen corrections for that? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion. This is the 390, 280.
Second. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, Counselor Ross, Counselor Cello, there's Counselor Fred.
Next one, RFP for mosquito control.
So we were due to go out for a request for proposals on the vector control, which is mosquitoes control. We only had one proposal from Roadrunner Public Health, which is our current provider. The amount went up by about three thousand, and the reason for that is because the counties, they're not anticipating the county participating. So right now, the travel was split between us, the county, and the Kibum County. So RFP will probably go up about three thousand for this proposal.
And to me, that vector control, guys, is way high. Because we don't need less than, I mean, that's not the community. One of our kids got sick, something like that, because we didn't do vector control.
They did a good job, I have to say.
It is. Fantastic job, Cindy, not with--
We get-- We get a really good response. Anytime I or community members call him, he jumps right on it within that day. If we say there's a neighborhood that's having problems, he goes out by that evening or the next day. Just good job.
You did a great job.
And you've got the total number?
It's, looks like it's eighty-six thousand three hundred.
I'll entertain a motion. Questions, first of all. Anybody got any questions on vector control? I'll entertain a motion, guys, I think that's fantastic. We got it in a budget, too, so--
You want to make more than one?
Eighteen thirty-six thousand three hundred.
I make a motion, Vic, second. Admit for the mosquito control, for eighty-six thousand three hundred dollars?
Counselor Ralph?
Yes.
Manny, Captain Fred? Fred, yes. Oh, this one here, all you, Cindy? Golf carts.
Golf carts. Yeah, I got here a year ago, wanting new golf carts. It appears to me that the golf cart kind of sustained themselves. So why aren't there new golf carts? Why must we turn to cannibalization? Why can't we just get new--
You have to talk to the golfers that are chairing the seats up.
No, it's not the golfers.
It is. Now, what else use them? No one else uses them golf carts.
They're worn. They wear down.
Yes, and they said that they would last thirty when we bought them, Fred. Cadillac of the golf carts, dude, that's what we were told, right here in this room.
So a few years ago, I called around, and most golf courses, communities our size, keep them for four, maybe five years, at the most, and then they trade them in. Kim, do you have anything to say? I know Fred and I went out and visited with Paul Crumb, who's been helping maintain them, and he was saying that we have two that he can't get running at all anymore, and he called the company, the manufacturer, and, you know, "What do you think's wrong? What do we need to do?" And they couldn't figure it out either. They said, "Usually, they don't last this long." So it's, we don't know. So he also said he's really having trouble getting replacement parts that they're obsolete.
Well, as of right now, we have fifty-six that are running. We did have to cannibalize one of them because it was gonna cost us more to replace the electric transmission. So we went ahead and used it for parts, which came out really well for us. Saved us some money there. Currently, I do have parts on order. They've been on order for about a month because part numbers are changing continuously because two models have come out since we last bought carts. But I work with the company, and they are trying to find them, and they get them to us as soon as we can. And it's common things that break, like the springs. They're rusted out with the quality of water that we have now. So we replace those. The cart pads have been replaced, so that helps with the cart also. But, you know, we've changed batteries three times, and we're looking at probably going another set of batteries for the other half. We replaced twenty-five back in 2017, of March 2017. And we were looking, we haven't had issues yet, but this weekend, we were full. They went around twice. I had, we had turned down a few people. We have to take out carts, bring them back in because those batteries aren't holding the charge as long as they should.
So it cost us about eighteen thousand each time we replaced half of the batteries?
And they last two years?
Yes.
So that's thirty-six thousand dollars for the whole fleet for two years.
We've also spent twelve hundred dollars in tire replacements because they split down in the middle instead of, you know, the Delta Pro, so it's giving us a good price on them.
So at least for sixty carts, it's somewhere around two-hundred-and-twenty thousand for five years. So it comes out to about thirty-six thousand a year to lease them for five years.
And right now, it's costing us nineteen thousand two hundred every two years.
Plus, well, we have other stuff. The windshields, we've been replacing, the tires--
And we did the upholstery on them.
The seats should be good for a little bit.
Yes, the upholstery came out pretty amazing. All of the seats are done. We are constantly changing out windshields. We do try to keep control of who has them, and, you know, they misuse our cart--
How do you break a windshield on a golf cart? Can somebody explain that one to me? Especially a plexiglass-- You play golf. How do we break windshields on a golf cart?
Vibration.
Vibration breaks a windshield on a golf cart? Then maybe we need to put windows in it instead of plexiglass because my truck's still got the little--
Well, what happened is there are these little clips that pick up the windshield. So when these clips start to wear out, the vibration does slam them down and it chips down at the bottom to where it gets. We do try to keep on top of it, the clips, you know, sometimes. We had a lot of people complain about it. We bolted them up, people take them down, so--
So take them off. Obviously, they don't want them on there if they're taking them down, right?
Well, you know, plexiglass, it's gonna weather, you know, in ten years.
Do you need a windshield on a golf cart?
Yes.
For what?
For wind, rain.
It's gonna thirty miles an hour.
Yes.
Modi, go to any golf course in the country--
I've been to several of them. I've been to several of them. I just, it's way in time.
It'll cost about thirty-five thousand a year for the golf cart.
Two-hundred-and-seventy thousand--
That's for five years, five years. We go down to a year. They bring in the golf carts, they rent, who brings in thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars a year?
Actually, it's a hundred-and-ten thousand.
And that goes all back to the golf carts?
That's why, why not? Why can't we--
Why? Why shouldn't they go to the city? Why shouldn't they go out to employee races and to streets and everything else? Why do they keep buying golf carts?
Why can't the golf carts be, at least pay for the golf cart?
That's what we were doing before, okay? That's what we were doing before. No, because that money's going back. That money's going back to the golf carts every single year. Thirty-six thousand dollars a year when it costs us nineteen thousand two hundred for two years when we own them, Cindy. It's math, it's real simple. And that's money that's coming to cities and going to at least the golf carts. I'll entertain a motion to approve new golf carts.
I move that we improve new golf carts.
But this will go down in July if it's approved. It won't go down now.
I've got a question before. Kim? What we need out there is more accountability. I noticed people go out there, nobody checked those carts when they go in or go out. In other words, I was with my grandson in East Mounds, and when you rent a cart over there, that was a good cart.
You gotta sign for it and everything. When it comes back in, then go back out, they check.
If somebody kicks it or breaks the windshield, vibration, they're liable.
We don't have that here.
And we don't have that. I noticed, you know, it's, you know, I'm not saying--
I'm not taking more manpower, though.
And then there's a span there for the guy goes home and nobody there. I understand that's what happened.
And he's talking about Paul Crumb's not there all the time.
Right, Paul Crumb leaves at two o'clock. Myself, Seth Lord, or Ron Stevens, when there are carts that come in, we do go down and check them. Now, we do, it is hard to keep track of who has them. You're right, you know, but, like I said, it'd take more manpower to keep someone down there all day long.
Okay. We're going for the summer season.
Right.
We're gonna have some summer people working there.
You have summer--
Or somebody like that. Get a cart, draw a cart, and when something's wrong, just drive it in the windshield, crack the corner, whatever, and he comes back with a broken, whatever. What happened? Those guys kick them and toss them, toss them.
That's right.
And nobody can tell me it's not, I know--
That's right. Seen it with my own eyes, doing a golf cart against, club against a golf cart.
I'm not seeing-- People can do that, yeah?
I've seen it with my own eyes. You know? And yet, we're paid for them to abuse the golf carts, guys. I got a problem with that. I really do. But like I said, we're entertaining a motion now to buy new golf carts in July with a new budget here. Cindy has made the motion?
No, I got something to say, too.
Go ahead.
Hi, I've been waiting for everybody for--
Go ahead, Manny.
We sat here last year at the city council, and I was adamant about having maintenance on them and a maintenance chart.
A maintenance--
Where is that chart?
We have that chart. Mr. Crumb has it in a binder.
He has it, everything that goes in--
Everything that he does, he marks down in that binder, from greasing to adding water to the batteries, to, we keep numbers on what parts we have to replace, what carts we do it on. We have it in a binder downstairs with Mr. Crumb.
Okay, then the other thing is, is-- It gets kind of frustrating because you promised us that you would have somebody there checking carts in and out and making them accountable. No, no, wait. I said that at this meeting here. And we're going through that all over again, so where is the accountability for all that?
I can't control everything that happens every--
No, no, you're in charge of it, you can control it.
Yes, sir, I do.
And let's make it clear, and I don't want excuses because we sat here and had this argument about maintaining, fixing things as they came up broken, not wait a month or two before we order parts. And that's, that's crazy, that's--
Okay.
No, no, don't, don't hold your hand up, I mean--
Hold up, sir.
No, no, I'm not holding up.
All right, go ahead.
I got the floor, okay? So, we got all these promises. I don't think you fulfilled any of them. I don't think you fulfilled any of them. I mean, you, you're not, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, ordering parts. You're telling me that you're putting things back and waiting for, for parts to come in. Have you ordered it?
Yes, sir, they are on order.
Can you show me things, how, how long it's taken to come in?
I ordered them with Absco. I'd have to, I could email you.
Well, you should have had that today because you, you should have had everything ready because we were gonna ask these questions, especially me, since I'm a big fanatic of maintaining our, our stuff in our community.
Let me say something, Manny, have you been out there and seen the parts? Have you seen the parts that are going on? Have you seen the new batteries that are going on?
I've seen the new batteries, I checked.
And the new tires?
Yes.
How about the windshields?
I think that's great. I think that's great.
So she is doing her job.
Well, the thing of it is, is that if you're having to order parts and just making them sit there for a long time, that's not accountability. And I know, I brought it up, that the tires need to be done to get them done, which is right away, order them, not set, set them in the back and wait till summertime or springtime.
We don't set the carts in the back. If the windshield is cracked, we do make note of what damages are already been done, and we send them out. I can't control how fast Absco gets their parts in.
And that's, that's exactly what Paul Crum was telling Fred and I, that they're having trouble getting parts. Uh, it's just like your appliances that you work on, you're reliant on the stores to get them to you, and then if it's old enough machine, sometimes we don't sell that part anymore, right?
Absolutely.
No, 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 mo- most parts, manufactured parts, usually lifetime is twenty per part, okay?
Twenty years.
And if you can't get them from one supplier, and Ken's got a problem and she doesn't have on the refrigerator for next three weeks, let me tell you, I'm gonna make every availability company come to me to see, yay, yes, they have the parts. Okay? There's no reason for waiting when there's other, other manufacturers that can furnish the parts. They don't have them, let's go somewhere else.
Absco and the president club cart is the only part that you can get those parts from.
That's the only place.
Single vendor, kind of like the pumps.
Because it's a club cart. I can't go buy a Yamaha cart or a club cart. It's kind of just like your people.
Thinland or wherever it is. Norwegian, wherever it is.
The point is, you know.
Kim, you're doing a fine job. Make no doubt about it.
Thank you.
I think so also.
So, so.
It's my job.
I, I think what the council's asking for is really requiring more staff. So would you really like more staff or just get carts that are ready to go? That, you know, we're gonna be paying one way or another. Those carts don't get maintenance on their own. They don't get screwed up and shined up like Manuel spent hours doing out of thin air, and that costs money.
Paul Crum does an amazing job.
And I, Sidney, I would like to see you guys get new carts, okay?
Okay, she made, make a motion. Make a motion. Now we're gonna, we're gonna do this now. We're gonna do this right now, Jack. Make a motion to buy new golf carts, and let's get a say. Go ahead.
So, the other thing is, I, I'd like to have, I'd like, I'd like to have a manufacturer come out and give us a rundown on the warranty and everything else.
Yeah, we got that last time when they told us they're supposed to last thirty years, okay? That's what we got last time. They came here and told us that.
We were leasing them, so I don't need to kind of warranty. We were leasing them.
We were leasing. Not buying, we're leasing.
I understand we were leasing them, but are they sure?
When we gave the move to buy them, guys, and these guys were here and they told us they would last twenty years.
Can I make one statement?
Yes. Make a say. Okay, enough. We're done. Make the motion.
I move that we lease new golf carts for the golf carts.
In July. Get a new place.
With the new budget.
Second. Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Brick?
Yes.
Fred? There it is. Got the golf carts in July. Okay, next on the meeting. We got you, Jack.
No, you didn't either.
What?
Because you're taking a chance on something that you don't even think about, and that's safety to the people. You get them out there on a golf cart that's about wore out, and it's gonna wreck one these days, and you're gonna have a lawsuit.
Well, we got you brand-new golf carts, so you don't gotta worry about that.
Okay.
Okay?
Get them tomorrow.
Well, anyway. Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, next. Resolution fifteen eighty-four opposing EPA placement in San Mateo, please make it on the NPL. Guys, this one here was brought by me. If this happens, our property taxes are gonna go down by anywhere from ten to thirty percent, and then what's the county gonna do when they ain't even got that money coming in? Okay? These guys snuck this in during Christmas, trying to backdoor all of the councils and the commission, having it go only to the managers, and only the managers being invited to the meeting, which we responded in a letter in Klein telling them that it was wrong to try to speak to this group during the holidays when everybody was out, and now they had another meeting in Santa Fe that nobody in this area was involved, invited to, where they're pressing this NPL treaty. Guys, why is it such a priority right now when it's been this way for over sixty years? And I'll tell you what it is, is you got one of the bureaucrats in Santa Fe that is with the EPA and has done nothing but EPA his entire life, and he wants this to be his legacy. Okay? I oppose this for many reasons, not only because it's naturally found on the surface like Patty Martinez found it, but, I mean, it's designed to put mining companies out of business. And if this goes down and they get their priority listing, guys, our law, our taxes are gonna go down, and then you're not gonna have anybody that don't wanna come and move here when we're right next to a national priority list. That's what I've got on it, okay? And that's why I brought this to the council. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Harry. Were you at the special meeting in Santa Fe that they invited us to, or you didn't get invited either?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, you know, I, I wrapped the letter to Scott Pruitt, who is the main man of the EPA, with these concerns, because they are trying to sneak it in. You know, a lot of people, if you tell them your taxes are gonna go down on your property, well, they're all happy for that, but they don't know the end result of what's gonna happen here. You know, but I did wrap them a letter, and I already sent to them to try and stop this from happening. You know, they need to advise the public, have a public meeting.
That's right.
See what the public wants to do, not what they want.
That's exactly right.
But I, they, I did wrap them a letter, and it's already in Washington.
So really, it's asking for public input before they put it on the priority list?
Uh, see, they're trying to sneak it in.
Trying to sneak it in.
And that was my question to them. Why, nobody was invited.
Nobody.
I, I wasn't aware of it.
I was.
He said the mayor wasn't aware.
Yeah, but the managers weren't, but no one else.
I was, and I said, we're not gonna concur with this until we have public input.
And that's why I said, you know, they, I just sent him a letter, and I, I think Senator Fancher sent him a letter, and Rip did it on the call now, so.
And Mayor did too.
You know, I bet you wanted to, that you guys know that we are on top of this because they're trying to backdoor everything on us, and once they do it a priority for a super fund, you know, it's really gonna hurt the community.
You know, that's the thing too, is, is they promise you jobs, okay? They promise all of this stuff, and yet we've been through these cleanups before here. They don't hire anybody from Sibley County. They bring them from Kansas, they bring them from Texas, they bring them from Oklahoma, okay? They don't.
You don't have people with the necessary skills here.
They tell us though, check it out, when they come here and they sell you this crap like they did the last time, they tell us, we're gonna hire a hundred people from your community.
You know that's untrue.
We know it's untrue, so why do they come and tell us that? Why did they try to sneak this in in the back door in December when we're all out on holiday, when there's no meetings? Why did they only come to the manager and not to the elected officials that represent the people? They did none of these things. And it's wrong, it's backwards the way they're doing it, and they're just trying to hammer us in. And here's something else for you to think about. We've got an uranium mine out there that just went back to active status, okay? It's fixing to go back to work and start putting people back to work in this county. What happens to that mine if they get their listing? It's gonna shut back down, okay? And we need jobs here, period. Period.
You know, Mr. Mayor, they didn't even invite the people that are working at home here right now.
Yes, they didn't invite nobody.
They didn't invite anybody into it, just a little group. I just want you to, I just, you guys know what I'm, I'm, okay? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Eric. And I believe you guys are gonna have a special meeting on this, right, Robert?
Yes, we are, Mayor.
I know, I know Felix is planning one in Milan too.
Yes.
Um, because it's the right thing to do for our community, guys. The public needs to put their input in before this happens. And if they agree to go with it, then we go with it. But if they agree not to go with it, then we need to stand with them. And right now, I'm against them, man, because they're backdooring us, guys, and they're not giving the public any comment period at all. They're not listening to us. Yes, Robert?
Mayor, they, they did go to our county manager, our private county manager?
Yeah, they, all three of them at the same time. Laura, Valerie, and Paul Peña, out at the village. They got all three of them at the same time, but they didn't invite any of the rest of us.
Right.
And Laura brought it back to me right away, immediately. And then I put out a letter to the state, to the governor, telling her this is wrong, we've got to stop this now and let the public have input in.
I, I was the only one at the meeting that voiced a concern that we needed to bring this to the public and hear the industry side of the story before we, and all the ramifications prior to putting it on the list.
And they're still doing it.
Well, that, that's my response to our new county manager now, is to get hold of them, and they need to come and give a presentation to the community. I am not gonna sit here, the county commissioner, and make decisions, and if I'm gonna shut down the jobs down here, I will not do that.
Right.
So I am on board with that. And Laura and Mayor, what they do, what they're doing is, like I said, telling people, you know, well, your taxes are gonna be cheaper, and, and, you know, people will say, oh, yeah, that's fine, and, you know, you expressed concern, but nobody else did, because they don't even know what's going on.
And that was my thing. I don't, I told them, I don't know enough to make a decision based on this one-hour meeting, that we need to bring this to our public, and we need to hear the other side, the industry.
Well, you know, you need to hear the, the part of it from the city, I mean, from the citizens.
That's right.
Yes.
Everybody.
Everybody, not just myself or the mayor, or, or the community here.
Everybody.
Right.
The people have to speak up and say, hey, you know, we're for it or we're against it. You know, that's what we need to do. We need to educate our people so they know exactly what's happening with this, instead of just going right-side in there and saying, oh, yeah, my taxes are gonna go down from five hundred to four hundred this year, and they're happy, but they don't know the end result of it. We need to educate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution fifteen eighty-four opposing EPA placement of the San Mateo, based on the NPL.
I make a motion to approve resolution eighteen, that's fifteen eighty-four.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Upstate.
Upstate?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Fred? Yes. Alrighty then, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to table number six, the agreement with the county?
Right. Take the priority, take it right there.
No, we waited till right now, so I need a motion to remove it to table until next time. Please.
I make a motion to table it. A resolution of agreement forty eighteen.
Second. Fred? Sidney?
Yes.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
All righty then, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to table number six, the agreement with the county?
Right.
Take the priority, take it right there.
No, we waited till right now, so I need a motion to remove it to table until next time. Please.
I make a motion to table it. A resolution of agreement forty eighteen.
Second. Fred? Sidney?
Yes.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Fred? Yes. Alrighty then, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to table number six, the agreement with the county?
Right. Take the priority, take it right there.
No, we waited till right now, so I need a motion to remove it to table until next time. Please.
I make a motion to table it. A resolution of agreement forty eighteen.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Rick?